Welcome to the Board of Education Business Meeting of Tuesday, January 24. I will note that there are seven board members present. We have been in closed session for the purposes of approval of closed-session minutes of December 13, 2011, January 10, 2012, and January 17, 2012. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda this evening is a good one. We have a couple of staff recognitions, and I'm going to go to the podium to present Our first recognition this evening is for the National Board Certified Teachers' recognition. We have four new teachers, not new teachers, but new to the National Board Certified process, who have earned their certificates at this time. And I just have a couple of remarks to make. It's quite the process that teachers go through. And we, as a board and as a district, are really all about excellence in education. Excellence in education begins with excellent learning, and excellent learning requires excellent teachers. And it is our goal, as a board and as a district, that every student in this district have an excellent teacher, have a great teacher. So we applaud you, the four of you who've earned your certificates, and the, I'm sure, others of you who are working toward it. We applaud you for your efforts to be officially and nationally recognized for your teaching abilities, your achievements in teaching. We now have 18 National Board Certified Teachers. It's a process that, I'm going to read a little bit about it off the website. It's very analogous to board-certified doctors, board-certified accountants. It's a very rigorous process, and we are so proud that four more of our teachers have earned this. The National Board certification is achieved upon successful completion of a voluntary assessment program designed to recognize effective and accomplished teachers who meet high standards based on what teachers should know and what they are able to do. As part of the certification process, candidates complete 10 assessments that are reviewed by trained teachers in their certified areas. The assessments include four portfolio entries that feature teaching practice; they have to videotape themselves, and six constructed response exercises that assess content knowledge, the content of the area that they're certified to teach. The organization runs itself on five core propositions: that teachers are committed to students and their learning, certainly something we all espouse; that teachers know the subjects they teach and how to teach those subjects; that they are responsible for managing and monitoring student learning; that teachers think systematically about their practice and learn from experience; and that they are members of learning communities, all of the things which these four teachers and those that have earned this before them have done. The teachers who achieved National Board certification have met high standards through study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and peer review. It can sometimes take up to three years to get this whole process completed. And I really think that the process of requiring you, as a teacher, to reflect upon your teaching for purposes of improvement is key, and that the beauty of this exercise is that it's not going to stop with the earning of the certificate, that you are now a much more reflective individual, and you will continue to grow and improve in your art. Congratulations on your achievement, and we trust that you will be role models for your peers and encourage them to follow in your footsteps. We have, as I said, four teachers. If you could please come up here, and I'll give you your certificates. We have Donna Duer from Conrad Fisher. And from York, we have Elizabeth Leidoff, Megan Mahilos, Jessica Weldon. Do you like it? That would be great. I'm going to give you these later, after I read them. You must be Megan. Yes. Jessica. Congratulations. I didn't bring the sheet. Just turn around and stand up here for a minute. I'm going to read a proclamation. And Beth Leidoff is World Languages at York. We have Megan Mahilos, math at York. We have a lot of mathematicians and a lot of librarians who choose to do this. That's very interesting to me. And then we have Jessica Weldon, social studies at York. And this is the proclamation that they will all get. Whereas certification awarded by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards is the highest honor the teaching profession can bestow, and whereas this designation is bestowed upon teachers who have undergone rigorous assessment of competency according to NBPTS professional standards, requiring between 200 and 400 hours of work, which defines what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. And whereas National Board Certified teachers are called upon to act as role models and spokespersons in the effort to build and strengthen the teaching profession, to provide advice, assistance, and mentoring to new and experienced teachers, and to use their knowledge to help form education policy, restructure curriculum, and/or pilot innovative teaching strategies. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to Conrad Fisher School and York Community High School, to District 205 and the entire community of Elmhurst, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to our 2011 National Board Certified Teachers from Conrad Fisher, Donna Duer from York Community High School, Beth Leidoff, Megan Mahilos, and Jessica Weldon for this outstanding achievement. Congratulations again. We have another recognition this evening, and it is the recognition of a Construction Industry Service Corporation, or Cisco, award. And to do the honors, I'd like to call Principal Diana Smith to the podium.
Good evening to the Board and Superintendent Purnell. It's my pleasure to introduce the winner of the Educator of the Year Award from Cisco. The representative from Cisco couldn't be here tonight, so I'm here in her place. And I think, as you know about the background, the Construction Industry Service Corporation is a nonprofit labor management association. Cisco was founded in 1988 in an effort to bring union construction labor and management representatives together to work cooperatively in order to better the construction industry as a whole. Cisco currently represents over 8,000 union contractors and 140,000 workers in Cook, DuPage Lake, Kane, Kendall, and McHenry counties. Each year, this is interesting, Cisco recognizes excellence in the construction industry by recognizing just one labor conciliator, one public body, and just one educator, each of whom demonstrates a significant commitment to the overall quality of the construction industry. And this year, the district and York High School were very proud that the award for the Educator of the Year was awarded to our Chair of the York Industrial Arts Department, a man who has exhibited, in my mind, great vision and leadership in the advancement of all of the industrial arts, Mr. Ken Ross.
Mr. Ross is yet another example of our very fine teaching staff in this district. We congratulate you on being named Educator of the Year by Cisco. We thank you for your efforts, and we appreciate the prestige that this award brings not only to you and to York, but to the district and the community. And we also appreciate the example that you are setting for all of the teachers in the district by earning this award. I have a proclamation for you as well. Whereas in December 2011, the Construction Industry Service Corporation, Cisco, announced its Project of the Year Award winners as part of its annual Pride in Construction Award Program. And whereas this program recognizes the top-quality union construction projects in four categories, and also honors the efforts of an area educator as Educator of the Year, as well as Labor Conciliator of the Year and Public Body of the Year. And whereas Cisco Executive Director John Brining said, "We are proud to recognize these projects, organizations, and individuals for this prestigious award." And whereas Ken Ross, York Community High School Industrial Tech Chairman, was named the individual winner in the Educator of the Year category. And whereas a formal presentation to the winners will take place Friday, January 27, 2012, at the Cisco Annual Meeting in Oak Brook, Illinois. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to Ken Ross for his outstanding accomplishment. You have to shake hands. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but if you have things to do, we will understand. We appreciate your coming. It's always wonderful to recognize our quality staff. The next item on our agenda is public comments. No one has indicated an interest in addressing the board this evening. We will go on to Superintendent Communication, Mr. Purnell.
Yes, this evening we have two updates, both of which will be handled by Chris Welton. The first one is an overview of the insurance broker update that Chris and a committee just got through accomplishing and evaluating for the purposes of selecting an insurance broker. So I'm going to allow Chris to describe that process for the board and the public.
The contract for our current insurance broker was due to expire February 15, 2012. It was a three-year contract. The current broker, Lockton, had provided us good service for the duration of the contract, but the expiration of that contract was an opportunity for us to attempt to achieve some savings, if possible, and improve service, if possible. So we sent out an RFP. Over the years, Audrey and I had received contacts from insurance broker looking or had interest in providing that service for us. So we sent that RFP to 26 companies. In addition, we put the RFP on our website and also advertised in the newspaper. But based on the RFP, we received 18 proposals for consideration. And with that, then we formed or we took volunteers to serve on the selection committee. We asked for volunteers in the insurance committee and also on the finance committee. And I'm grateful for the help of the selection committee, which included Audrey Reed, our benefits coordinator, Brad Hillman, Assistant Superintendent Nikki Tamaru, Principal Ed Hawthorne, Katie Padberg, teacher at Sandberg, Tanya Dukina, teacher at Bryan, Linda Metana, teacher at Lincoln, and Jim Collins, board member. And the first step, what I decided to do was to eliminate the 10 highest-priced brokers. So we narrowed the field to eight strictly on price. And then after that, the committee got together to narrow the field down to five, just based on the quality of the proposal, the experience of the brokers, and the resources that the brokers provided. Then on December 8, the selection committee interviewed the five finalists. It was a very thorough interview process. It went from like 4:00 until 9:30 in the evening on December 8. And after thorough interview and then a lot of time we spent looking at the pros and cons of each company, the committee unanimously selected corporate benefit consultants and their acronym, CBC. We liked the customer service aspects that they displayed in the interviews. They have a lot of experience with school districts. They currently are brokers for 30 school districts. CBC is a blue diamond producer for Blue Cross Blue Shield, so they are only one of only seven in Illinois to achieve that status. The experience of their team, where they have a few employees that formerly worked for Blue Cross Blue Shield. One was an underwriter for Blue Cross Blue Shield for 23 years. The resources that they provide, they're going to provide us a website dedicated to employee benefits that our staff can go to understand our benefits. And the savings that we have achieved in this process will be, compared this contract for the next three years compared to the previous contract, the savings will be approximately $111,000 over the three years. Audrey followed up with reference calls, and all the responses were great about CBC. And so overall, we believe we're going to receive outstanding service at a much lower fee over the next three years with this new broker. And that's all I had on the broker.
Any questions of Mr. Welton on the whole insurance broker process? Ms. Hirsch.
I'm sure after sitting down with a large number of insurance brokers, there were some ideas that had been tossed around. One of the things that I think that we didn't, in the past, we had accomplished and offered to our employees a wellness fair. I don't know that that actually happened this year. What other ideas did some of these companies possibly bring forth in terms of either A, improving service, or B, reducing our costs? Can you share some of those ideas with us, please?
Yes. We didn't have a wellness fair this year, but we are having wellness screenings. And this year, for the first time, we have those happening in each of our buildings. And those are going to happen in early February. But in this process, it was an opportunity to ask five different brokers to give their opinions and ideas about our insurance plan and ideas that they had to take a look at what we currently are doing. I'll just go through a few of the ideas, the wellness screenings. One idea that we heard was to pay the company directly as opposed to running it through our insurance claims, that they felt like we could achieve some savings in that regard. One of the things that they talked about was carving out prescription drugs from our Blue Cross Blue Shield. That wouldn't really change our benefit plan design. It would result in two different cards that employees would have to carry. So these are just ideas that we heard that night that the insurance committee will be looking into. Some other ideas was to add a consumer-driven health plan, such as a high-deductible PPO plan with an HRA or an HSA. Take a look at redesigning the PPO II plan, taking a look at redesigning our HMO plans, carving out stop-loss from Blue Cross Blue Shield. So taking out our stop-loss coverage that we currently receive through Blue Cross Blue Shield, and looking at outside carriers for stop-loss. We talked a lot about consumerism and education on trying to get healthcare in a more efficient manner, the tools, the internet technology tools, like the website that I talked about That'll, it's a pretty good list for starters of things that we're kicking around in the insurance committee.
Historically, we've been given a presentation in March, I think it's at the March Business Meeting at the end of the month. Do you think that CBC is going to be in a position to have some of these new ideas and maybe some modifications to our current plan ready to be teed up for coverage, which would begin for the July 1 new fiscal year? Is that a reasonable expectation, or would that take a year's cycle to implement some of these changes?
They will be presenting something in the spring. I don't know if it's March, or April, or May, but depends on how the process with the renewal goes this year. But yes, they will be, they are doing the renewal, so they will hit the ground running immediately. I'll be calling them tomorrow in order to start working. They'll be meeting with the insurance committee, I think it's February 16, so like the day after the contract starts, they're meeting with the insurance committee. So they are doing this year's renewal, and they will be presenting at some point, but I'm not sure when.
Sorry, one last question. The insurance committee is representative of all three of our bargaining units? Is that correct? It reflects representation from all three groups, as well as the central office staff, but our selection committee for the broker didn't? So is that just...
Well, I took volunteers at the insurance committee, and the three union members were teachers, and they stepped up to work on this project with the rest of the committee I was open to volunteers from the other unions also, but it's just two volunteers.
The result of savings of $111,000 over three years, that's what we're projecting, is definitely the direction that we want to go in.
Right.
So opening it up to a broad group, I think, is the right thing to do. I think we have a good result. I'm hoping that we have a good result in our renewal and in managing our claims. That's a bigger piece of it, but we're a step in the right direction, so thank you for that.
Mr. Collins.
I just wanted to make a comment. Having participated in this process, and I know that this is one of the many things that Mr. Welton plans to put out for bid this year. I just wanted to say that I think this process, having observed it and participated in it, was a great example of good management. And I think congratulations go to Mr. Welton, Mr. Purnell, for that management process. The process was open. It was thoughtful. We had representatives from our faculty, our staff, our administration, and even the Board of Education. Great ideas were gathered to reduce further costs by putting it out to bid, as has been stated several times. We saved the taxpayer $111,000 over three years, while maintaining and probably improving service to our employees, which is the point of this process. And by working together with our employees, having happier employees, better cared-for employees, that means we have better educated kids, and that's what we're here for. So again, I just wanted to say, congratulations, this was a great process. Thank you for putting it together.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stufan.
Along the same lines as Mr. Collins, I commend us for implementing a practice of going out to bid for our services. I like the process of getting the reference calls from various different employees, because we have a lot of different employees, and they are interested in different things. So we got very good feedback in those reference calls, and I think that's a very good element to ensure is included in the bidding process for all of our services. It's prudent for us to look at the best services that we can obtain for the competitive costs and prices, which is a priority for us, given the economic conditions for us in the school district and the increasing expenses and the revenues that are flat, or, you know, the sources are decreasing, if you will. But what I wanted to articulate is that, based on the information that we received in the bidding process, we were able to choose a company that was, one, focused on customer service, which is very key for us, right, to take care of our employees, as Jim would say. I thank everyone for volunteering their time to participate in this process so that we could get everyone's perspective, because that's important as we move forward and make these big decisions. We chose someone that has experience in not only school districts, but large unit districts, which is important for us, because it's unique and it's a challenge sometimes. And we chose an award-winning producer of insurance brokers that is focused on customer service, that has a wealth of experience, I mean decades of experience in providing insurance, and with very good customer satisfaction results. So those are the key things that I saw in this process, of getting a lot of people involved in making the decision, you know, going out to bid to see what can we get that is in alignment with containing costs, which is what we have to do, given the economic conditions. So I thought that this process allowed us to obtain the key ideas and learnings of which you responded to when Ms. Hirsch asked her question. And that's what we're looking for, too, is best practices, and what can we do, and everything that we do. And that's what we were able to get. And it's a whole sheet of things that we are then going to hold this broker accountable to providing for us. So I commend everyone for this process. Those are really great things that we achieved, and it's a precedent to set for moving forward. So thank you.
This is an action item later on in our agenda. Are there any other, and we'll have another time to ask questions and comment, but is there anything else right now for Mr. Welton? Thank you. We appreciate it.
Just before, well, Chris has got another, but the other thing I want to highlight that we kind of just glossed over. The wellness screening that is going on is, to me, an important piece of keeping all of our employees healthy, and that's a responsibility that I think the district wants to take seriously. And so I want to thank Malia's staff, Chris Welton's staff, for really trying to promote this year. We're having it at each building, we're trying to put out the word to have our employees take advantage of the wellness screening. And overall, it'll result in two things. People will be healthier, we may head off a catastrophic illness for one of our employees by going through the screening. And secondly, it does have an effect of holding down health costs for all of our employees and for the district as a whole. But I think the primary thing is to keep people healthy and to have people here working hard in our organization. And I'm hoping people take advantage of that. But again, I want to thank Malia's staff and Chris's staff for really sitting down and promoting it this year, more than it has been before, as I understand it. So thank you. With that, I'd like to turn the next portion over also to Chris. He would just like to give you a funding status update on the state funding and reimbursement from the state of Illinois.
Put up on the screen here a list of the amounts of money where the state is a little behind in their payments to us. So the total is $2.4 million at this time. The largest items are the mandated categorical quarterly payments. And when we started the school year, we were two payments behind, where we had not received two payments that related to FY 11. On August 3rd, we received the third quarter payment. So that payment was due March 28th. We received that on August 3rd. And then we received on September 16th, the quarterly payment that was due on June 16th. And at that point, September 16th, we got that second payment. I was feeling pretty good that the state had closed the gap a little bit, but then we haven't gotten another payment since. So we haven't received any of the state funding due to the school district related to FY 12. So as of now, we have now received the first quarter payment, which was due September 26th, or the second quarter payment that was due December 27th. So I just wanted to keep, so we're still two payments late at this time. And then the, other than the special, the mandated categorical grants, then some of these, some of our other smaller grants have also now fallen behind in payments from the state. They've been vouchered by the State Board of Ed, but not released to us through the State Controller's Office. And that's all.
Any questions on this dire state of affairs for Mr. Welton? Ms. Hirsch.
I just want to make sure that I have this right. The state has now made us whole for fiscal year 10. They have made us whole for fiscal year 11. Correct?
Right.
That ended June 30 of 2011. And now for a fiscal year that we're currently in, towards the end of January, we have received, if I look at this, $673.40 from the state so far this year. That was a little bit of money for some food, free and reduced lunches from the state. I think that's the only thing that it looks like they requisitioned or paid out for this fiscal year 12.
Right. The-
So we're doing well.
State breakfast, they have paid a couple small amounts.
Okay. And if I added these up correctly, the total, well, that's not really a fair number to look at, but our budget for fiscal year 12 for these categoricals, this does not include general state aid, correct?
It does not. The general state aid payments, they have kept up with.
Okay, so we're budgeting $3.6 million for these categoricals and we've received basically none of it so far to date, right?
None related to 2012.
To this fiscal year.
Right.
Right, okay. And then for our categor, sorry, for the general state aid, I know that you didn't post this, but I had asked this a little bit earlier. Our general state aid dollar amount is not the foundation level. Because of our property tax base and those kind of things, we received $366 per student.
That's right, we're the alternate formula, so, and $366 per student.
Okay, but the state is making those payments on time and is current with the general state aid portion?
They are.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the state reimbursements? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of December 13th, January 10th, or January 17th of 2012?
Couple clarifications, if we could. On December 13th, I just wanted to, in the discussion about the tax abatement issue, I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified that Mr. Purnow was pointing out that the Village of Oakbrook had requested only that the tax, formal tax abatement, that the tax abatement be discussed. A little bit farther down, just wanted to clarify my own statement that I asked about the status of recommendations coming from the subcommittee, from the committee. And then one more comment on January 10th, just to clarify that the city manager and the city assistant finance director came to the finance committee and that there was a consensus that there is an obligation for the city to pay surplus. It said play on, pay surplus under Section 3 of the 2004 Intergovernmental Agreement. Just wanted to clarify those few points.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as clarified and presented. Next item on our agenda is board committee reports. First, we will hear from Ms. Hirsch on the performance management committee.
Thank you. The performance management committee, made up of Mr. Bloom, Mrs. Stufan, and myself, met January 12th. I would characterize it as a great meeting. We had Mr. Purnow and we had Mr. Hillman, and we really covered three topics. First is PERA, the update on PERA, which is Performance Evaluation Reform Act, which was actually put in place by the Illinois Legislature in order for the state of Illinois to qualify for Race to the Top dollars. It addresses performance evaluations for both teachers and principals. And while the legislation passed probably two years ago, I think now, there are a lot of changes that are coming up quickly that go into effect and it has created a lot of work, and I would characterize it as good work, that needs to be done in the human resources area. And so some of the things that we talked about, understanding there's a very specific, detailed timeline. Basically, we have a new process. If a district is in a position where we need to do a reduction in force, a combination of the PERA and SB 7 has forced us or put us in a position where we will be making reductions based on teachers' evaluations, not just seniority. And so there is a lot of work that needs to get done to create a different kind of a list in terms of what potential teachers, what their qualifications are, what they're qualified to teach, and accumulating all of the cumulative performance evaluations. And so the HR department has been working very hard to make sure that we have all of that data collected on all of our teachers and that that data is accurate. And we have an opportunity here to reach out to teachers, feed that back in, and come to an agreement on a new version of an honorable dismissal list. We did talk about teacher evaluations and principal evaluations a little bit, and there are some changes that are coming down the pike. We discussed in terms of values that the committee wanted to express, that we had for teacher evaluations and principal evaluations. We wanted to have a great process, making sure that we're taking into account these legal changes. And we agreed, came to consensus on support for evaluations that should be authentic, that include every staff member is evaluated in a timely manner and that the evaluation, the purpose of the evaluation is to assess where a teacher or staff person is and be able to provide feedback that can give that opportunity to the staff member, teacher, to grow and improve their skills. And that's really the purpose of the performance evaluation. There is considerable training that our evaluators will need to go through by September 1st of 2012, even though the full change to teacher evaluations will not go into effect for many years. There are some minor changes, which might not be minor, that are going into effect for next year, so we talked about those. The second item on the agenda for that meeting was our governance expectations that we had from the meetings earlier and really looking at performance management and the role of performance management in human resources as an overall goal. The changes that we're making because of PERA and SB 7 are really, they're good changes for the district to make, but they are really being instituted or initiated because of changes in legislation. And it was the will of the committee that we take a larger view, that we look at this as our most strategic asset in terms of putting qualified teachers in front of our students. It's our entire human resources organization, not just the evaluation component, but the hiring component, the training component, development of our teaching staff, and thus, of course, evaluation and feeding the feedback into the growth. And the committee really expressed a desire to look at it as a whole system. And we had asked Mr. Hillman to take a look at some of the pieces that were a little bit earlier in the process than the evaluation. Take a look at the hiring process and what possible improvements we could make in our hiring, how effective we are at hiring, looking at cohorts of teachers that we've brought in over the last 10 years to see how many of them we've kept. And then looking at, obviously, professional development for our teachers as well as the evaluation. So looking at it as an entire system. That was the desire of the committee. And finally, a new acronym for Elmhurst coined by our own Dr. Charles Johns is DPI, District Performance Indicator. It took me the second time before I caught what the acronym was going to refer to, but we've been talking at the board table about district performance indicators and setting goals and targets and assessing honestly where we are and then setting goals on where we want to be. And it's the role of the performance management committee to try to capture all those district performance indicators, to make sure that they're in sync, that they're working together. Each of the committees, I think, is working on different areas of identifying performance indicators, but we talked a bit about the process of how we're going to bring all of those into one umbrella, ensure that all of the board priorities that we had laid out at the beginning of this fiscal year had been actively and thoroughly reflected in our performance indicators. We didn't miss anything, how they fit together, and how we could potentially start communicating out those performance indicators. And I think there's some good work going on in terms of identifying the performance indicators, but we also wanted to set baselines and have good, healthy discussion about what the baseline data is and where we want to go. And so we delved into a conversation about how we do that as a Board of Education, along with our cabinet, and ensuring that we have good, healthy conversations about where we are and what targets we want to set. And that is going to be the ongoing work of the performance management committee and looking possibly to a board cabinet slash retreat towards the end of the year when we have those, that baseline data and we can start negotiating and determining what our targets are going to be. So it was a long meeting, we had some great discussion, we've got a lot of work that's going on, and we look forward to continuing that.
Any questions for the performance management committee? Ms. Ebner.
Do we have DPIs for outside the curriculum department? Or was that what you reviewed at the meeting? The curriculum indicators?
We looked at the curriculum, each of the cabinet members in each of the business areas of the district, I would say with Mr. Purnow's leadership are developing and they're bubbling up and they're going through an iterative process where the team members responsible in that area are coming to agreement on what those indicators are going to be and they're working their way up, I think, to the committees. I think curriculum and instruction is one that might be early out of the gate in terms of teeing up some potential performance indicators. I don't know that any other ones have come forward to other committees, but I expect that they would. But the thought was that we would make sure that we cover everything in performance management.
We're dealing with a minor spill here, trying to preserve the electronics. Any other questions for the performance management committee? Mr. Bloom?
Yeah, I ask myself. I'd just like to echo what Maria said and applaud Dave and Brad for, you know, coming forward with this desire to instill a culture of, I mean, too often, performance reviews are associated with a negative as a way to weed out. And that's basically a lost opportunity for us. I mean, we believe great organizations use these types of tools, this ability to enhance growth and professional development and recognize great work as well. So, you know, I just want to, you know, make sure that we get that across is, you know, well, you got a lot of negatives out there talking about performance reviews in the context of RIFs. That's not what we want these to be.
Okay, Mr. Collins, when you finish wiping up, can you tell us about the finance and operation? I'm sorry, Mr. McDonough.
I just wanted to say that this is, I think it's a very exciting time to be involved in education in Illinois. The SB 5? I'm sorry, SB 7, I'm sorry, was passed unanimously. And it was an exciting thing that all the elements in Illinois came together to come up with a path. And now here, the administration with board input is putting together the pieces and really making it happen. I think there's a lot of expectation in the community that good things can arise from these things happening. And as someone who's not a member of the committee, I'm just very grateful to see you working so constructively, administration and board members, in making this happen.
Ms. Hirsch.
I just, the principle, this is all, there's a ton of change going on in education and all of it is really staggered. Okay, so by September 1st of 2012, every district is to have had every person who is going to evaluate a certified employee trained. And that training is not yet available yet for our evaluators. But yet, we're going to be held to that date and we are working very hard as a district to put every piece into place so that we can, number one, comply, but also, two, it's the right thing to do, to make sure that our evaluators are well-trained and confident and comfortable and that we are evaluating consistently across all of our buildings and our grade levels because the students' experience should be similar and the teacher, the employees' experience should be similar in terms of their evaluation and the fairness and what we're looking for out of our teaching staff. And then, you know, the data component, our principals for next school year are going to be evaluated as a component of their evaluation is going to include student academic performance for next year. We don't have those data systems in place yet. We are doing a ton of work to figure out what the correct and fair way to include student academic growth into a principal's evaluation. And yet, the teachers, I think the school year, and I've been telling Dave, I'm trying to write a calendar that tells me which fiscal year, what goes into place, but I believe it's 15, 16, that our district will most likely be required to include student improvement performance data into a teacher's evaluation. This is a multi-year process. And the states that did win Race to the Top funds and got the big money early on are struggling with this. They do not have answers to some of the questions. This is a multi-year process and that's one of the key reasons it's so important that we look at human resources as a system. Let's look at hiring, let's look at evaluating, let's look at training, let's look at evaluating, let's bring that growth back in, let's make sure we can provide professional development to improve. And we have to look at our-
everybody has to feel very confident that whatever data system is put in place as part of our employees' evaluation, we all can buy into and feel confident that that's accurate data, it's good data to measure. There's a ton of work that's going to happen over the next three or four years, and I think this is just the tip of the iceberg. I think our committee structure is really going to hopefully support the administration in terms of ensuring that we're monitoring these multi-year projects and that we stay on track and that we implement them well.
Anything else? Finance and operations, Mr. Collins.
Finance and operations committee consists of myself, Mr. McDonough, and Mr. Bloom. We met on January 19th, our last meeting, with Mr. Welton and Mr. Purno. And our meeting had three main sections to it. The first was a review of nine summary financial statements to see how we were doing revenues versus expenses versus our budget. And I'm happy to report that the only glaring item that came up was the state of Illinois's lack of paying us $2.4 million that they owe us. It continues to baffle me how they can raise our state income taxes by 67% and then not pay our schools what they're owed. But if we, if we look past that, basically, I'm happy to report that we are on track revenues versus expenses year-to-date. And it appears, without any further surprises, that we'll end the year in the exact same way, on track, on budget. The second thing we discussed was our five-year facility plan. This is, this is an item that, in my experience, we used to visit once a year at most. And instead, our finance and operations committee, you know, our task is to be the good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And we are tasked, and the administration is tasked, with managing 14 buildings in our district, which total a million and a half square feet of space on 108 acres of So we, in a very deliberate, very open way, want to continue to discuss our facilities plan and, and what we need to do to protect the taxpayer's investment in the buildings and the property that, that the taxpayer owns in District 205. We took a look at three main buildings in this meeting. Well, actually, I'm sorry, we, we addressed our five-year facility plan, which immediate needs for the next five years appear to total about $3.5 million. And that's just for the next five years. Interestingly, that our aquatic center at the high school looks like it could use about $2 million worth of work. We also looked at the Madison Early Childhood Center, which in the immediate needs, about $800,000 worth of work. And if you include maybe out to 10 years, it needs about $1.5 million worth of work. And then we also continued our discussion of Lincoln School. You know, the, the property in this district ranges from, you know, 10 or 12 years old to 95 years old, and our 95-year-old building is Lincoln School. In the meeting before this, the, the majority of the board toured the building. And what we found in our, I mean, basically, Lincoln is a tie with Hawthorne for our largest elementary school. We found a 95-year-old building and all the charm and trappings that come with that. It is, you know, it's an old charming building. Unfortunately, if you looked at any of the current requirements for access, it meets none of them. It, as I stated before, it has drain pipes from the roof that go, that are designed and do go through the walls and empty outside. And I know the, there's been quite a bit of press to this discussion, and I just want to let you know that this discussion is going to continue. Because it started as a little history. It started about a little less than a year ago when we heard our, our 10-year facility plan, that, that the plan was that we needed about $10 million to maintain our million and a half square feet in our 14 buildings, which is not an outrageous sum of money over 10 years, given the size and the scope of what this district owns. We need to protect our investment and maintain it. But we also heard that about $4 million of that was targeted for Lincoln School. So I asked the question, well, if you're going to spend $4 million tuckpointing it and, and just keeping it safe and dry, what does it cost to build a new one? So in our previous meeting, we discovered that number with the help of our architects is about $20 million. So we're looking at $4 million to preserve what we have over the next 10 years, $20 million to rebuild it. What we don't want to happen is to put $4 million into the building in maintaining it and then tearing it down. That doesn't seem to be a wise use of taxpayers' money. So we want to put together a deliberate, open, well-thought-out plan. We have no timeline in mind. We, we want to gather data. We want to come up with the best possible plan. We, we have no deadline to put this plan together. But the more we investigate it, the more we discuss it, the better that plan will be. And we'll keep you up to date as it progresses. And I guess I don't have a whole lot more to add to that unless Mr. McDonough or Mr. Bloom does.
I mean, the only thing I'll add to it is the general approach is that we believe our goal is to be prepared for the potential risks and surprises that are out there. We do not want to be making decisions on a rushed and emergency basis, and we think that we have an opportunity to look at every building within our district, you know, assess how old it is, assess what the major needs are, assess the risks that may happen. You know, have we been patching pipes and could they burst? And, you know, take those, take those risks and make that economic trade-off on purpose to minimize the risk that we're going to be surprised and running around trying to find a few hundred thousand dollars to fix something that we didn't know about. So I think it's, you know, it's a prudent planning process to go through this, to ask these questions. And that's what's overriding the reason I think we're doing this.
Yeah. And I guess the, the other thing I'll add to this is that we want it to be no surprise to anyone that there is about $2 million left in our capital projects budget. And we've identified about $10 million worth of projects to do over the next 10 years. As I said, you know, $3.5 to $5 million over the next five years. So it should be a mystery to no one that, that something's going to have to happen to replenish that capital projects budget. Otherwise, we won't be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Our, our buildings will deteriorate, we won't be able to maintain them, and eventually, you know, Ben Franklin's line, or Ben Franklin's old adage that a stitch in time saves nine, I think there will be plenty of examples of that. We, we want to address small problems before they become big problems. We want to maintain our facilities before they become rundown. And that's the, that's the purpose of the operations part of our committee. Anything else?
There was one part of the discussion that I thought was important was that there's got to be a, an intense information gathering process that involves administration, teachers, staff, providing information about how this building is working and what should happen, as well as the public. Capital projects, whether they're small or large, or the decision whether to do small or large is a community decision. And the question is, what do the taxpayers and the residents of this district want to happen with this significant problem that's out there?
I think there's a perception in our community that, that a lot of times, these things come up and are dealt with as emergencies. We don't want this to be an emergency. We, we know what our financial situation is. We know how old our properties are. We want to put together a well-thought-out, fiscally responsible plan, and that's our goal.
I think the rest of the board appreciates that as well. Ms. Ebner.
I just had a quick question. You mentioned 3.5 million over five years. Is the pool in Madison School beyond that? Beyond the 3.5 million?
Well, I, I'm afraid in, as anything else, you summarize and you tend to gloss over some things.
Okay.
You know, we can, as time goes on, we'll certainly update you with, with more accurate, if you're, if you're interested, more year-by-year numbers. But part of Madison School is beyond that.
Okay.
I kind of, in, in my summary, I apologize that it wasn't completely clear. But yes, part of Madison School is beyond that. It looks like the pool in the next couple of years could, could use about $2 million worth of work.
I applaud the committee's work. This was one of the things that I think we were looking, as a board, to have better information and a better understanding of what, again, our long-term investments and our long-range planning process needs to be. I think we still could, and I don't know where your committee is on the work in terms of the reporting and the classification. There was some talk of, you know, what is absolutely mandatory, what is considered life safety, what is, what is considered, okay, our lockers at Sandberg, I know I've heard this story before, are either original to the building or they're 60 years old or something. There's certain things that, that we need and some sort of categorization in simple way to put all of these requests in some kind of grid that helps us understand what is really non-negotiable versus what is something that is fiscally prudent versus what is something that is a nice-to-have. So a little bit of, I know, I think you're working on the reporting, working with Mr. Schu on categorizing and better informing both the board and the public in terms of what our capital requirements are. So I encourage you to continue to examine that piece.
As, as a piece of that, yeah. And that is our goal, to have the entire thing laid out. And, and you realize that when you have a million and a half square feet of property, there is some things that come up that, no matter how good you are, you didn't anticipate. I will also point out that in the summer of 2013, and we could do it early, the mandated 10-year life safety survey is due to be done. Our 10 years are up. So many additional things will come out of that as we have architects through our 14 buildings to point out to us for life safety, what, what should be done. And you pointed out the, the gym lockers, which we had heard about for the, our first two years on the board. And, and I have to say, I want to compliment our administration, Mr. Schu, for coming up with a pretty creative short-term fix. They were able to find some used lockers and basically salvage parts. And there are used lockers mixed with the old lockers, and the old lockers that were torn out to put in the used lockers were used for parts. And so they were managed to, for a very small sum of money, extend the life ever so temporarily of all these gym lockers in our middle schools. So again, thank you for some out-of-the-box thinking.
And Maria, to your point.
Mr. Bloom.
We absolutely are focused on those categories. Unfortunately, the discussion has revolved around a majority of these things being things that we need to do or highly recommended to do, yet we have not gotten into nothing on this list that we've talked about, you know, relates to any type of reconfiguring the way we deliver education, curriculum, reorganizing classrooms, you know, any of the, you know, the nice stuff that we love to do. Because, you know, given the budget issues and the reality that we have now, we're trying to keep up with just making sure that we're investing enough in the properties to extend their lives, you know, as long. But that is definitely something that's on the agenda that was asked.
I don't want to lose the life of a roof. I mean, we have 14 buildings. We know when those roofs were installed. We know how long they last. We might risk reward, say, we're going to let those roofs ride, but I would like to see the whole picture, not just the emergency list, the things that we know we've been putting off. But look at the lifespan of the chillers, look at the lifespan of all of the key components that we have. And it, it's going to come out to look to be probably a very large number. But again, long-term thinking and fiscal responsibility. We want to make sure that we can lay out a plan, a multi-year plan, for how we can address some of these needs that are going to come up.
Any other questions for the finance and operations committee? Any discussion? Okay, let's move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the personnel report, financial reports, approval of the donation of a scoreboard to Sandberg Middle School, and the second readings and adoptions of a number of policies, student-athlete concussions and head injuries, electronic media usage and conduct, restrictions on publications, including electronic materials, some minor changes to graduation requirements, and the policy on gifts to the district. We also have the second reading on a number of updates on, that include just legal references and some wordsmithing from the policy manual for Sections 2, 3, 5, and 6. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion this evening? Seeing none, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move that we accept the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through L.
Is there a second? Move by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. Collins, to accept the consent agenda. Mrs. Walsh, could you call the roll, please? Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Droni?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Again, thank you to the administration and the committee for the fine work in vetting this firm, and we look forward to increased services and savings. Next item on the agenda is the announcement of our upcoming meetings. We have a number of committee meetings. Coming up in the month of January, the board improvement policy on the 25th. The rest are in February. Curriculum and instruction meets February 1st, performance management meets February 9th. And then we have our regular two workshop and board meetings on the second Tuesday, fourth Tuesday of February. That leads us to board communications. Anybody have anything to share? Ms. Hirsch?
The board liaison program that the board implemented at the beginning of this school year. My two schools are Hawthorne Elementary School and Sandberg Middle School. And I was privileged to be able to take a day and visit Hawthorne Elementary. I'm still working on getting into Sandberg, but that will happen shortly. But I just wanted
Oh, I'm sorry. Benefits management consulting.
As the benefits management consultant, effective February 15th, 2012. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Stufen. Is there any discussion? This was discussed at pretty good length earlier in the evening. Did anybody come up with any other burning question or comment to be made? Mrs. Walsh, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnny?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Seven ayes, no nays, that motion carries. Again, thank you to the administration and the committee for the fine work in vetting this firm and we look forward to increased services and savings. Next item on the agenda is the announcement of our upcoming meetings. We have a number of committee meetings coming up in the month of January. The Board Improvement Policy on the 25th. The rest are in February. Curriculum and Instruction meets February 1st. Performance Management meets February 9th. And then we have our regular two workshop and board meetings on the second Tuesday, fourth Tuesday of February. That leads us to board communications. Anybody have anything to share? Ms. Hirsch.
The board liaison program that the board implemented at the beginning of this school year, my two schools are Hawthorne Elementary School and Sandberg Middle School. And I was privileged to be able to take a day and visit Hawthorne Elementary. I'm still working on getting into Sandberg, but that will happen shortly. But I just wanted to share with my fellow board members, I took a day and visited every elementary classroom in Hawthorne. It was quite a trip. My head was spinning by the end. But it was very, very instructive. Got to visit every classroom and see instruction in action, watching our excellent teachers provide instruction in guided reading, doing flexible grouping in reading. I got to spend the afternoon with the upper grades and they're doing flexible grouping in mathematics and seeing some of the initiatives that we have put in place. It was definitely a firsthand lesson. I got to spend not more than six or seven minutes in each classroom. Some of them, I was able to introduce myself to the kids and they were, they were a riot. They were all over it. So there's great things going on. At Hawthorne, I can speak too because it's my board liaison school and I got to spend a day there. But I strongly encourage board members, if you have some time, if you can get into a building and see our teachers in action, it's, it's quite impressive. I think the more informed that we can be, if we have those opportunities to see what happens, you know, during the day in our teachers' lives, the better informed decisions I think we can make, Natalie, in terms of understanding what jobs we're asking them to do, but also the curriculum and had little quick conversations with teachers, that was very, very informative. So it was well worth the time spent and I appreciate the Hawthorne teacher opening up their classrooms and allowing a board member in. This morning, I also had an opportunity to attend Elmhurst College's governmental forum. The Speaker of the House of Representatives of Illinois, Michael Madigan, was present and was, I guess, he wasn't sure that he was keynote speaker, but he was one of the key speakers at the event. It was very interesting. Speaker Madigan doesn't get out in public much and engage with the public. He took questions for quite a long time. But I guess the bottom line message is that we're not seeing any movement in terms of the state solving its financial challenges. There are still significant challenges for the state. And while the 2.4 million that we're owed by the state is significant in our budget and it's something that we're concerned about and talking about, we are definitely not top of the list in terms of the people that need to get paid out. There's a lot of people that are providing social services that still haven't been made whole from their fiscal years. I also don't see an easy solution in the next few years. So I think we're being very conservative in terms of our budgeting of revenue coming from the state. I'm glad that they've made us whole for the last fiscal year, but I don't know how long it will take them to make us whole for the current year that we're in right now. So I think we are taking a wise move in terms of budgeting conservatively, revenue on the state side, to ensure that we can pay our bills on time and take care of our employees and our kids.
Any other board communications? That completes our agenda. Entertained a motion to adjourn. Moved by Ms. Hirsch, seconded by Mr. McDonough. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Thank you. Good night.